Maybe I should get on. Okay, first of all, welcome to the first meeting of the new year and happy new year, everybody. And for those of you who are regular visitors here during our council meetings, check out the guy over there on the far right, far left, rather, Matt Ron. So Matt, welcome to the group.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, before we get too far afield, Mr. John Shaw. Beautiful piano music, a little Disney there. Thank you, appreciate it. As we generally do, we'll start the meeting with an invocation from today from Pastor Adam Sullivan of Crossroads Church. Pastor Sullivan, if you would. And afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge that will be led tonight by Council Member Edwards.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Let's bow. Lord, we are so thankful for the newness that we are presented today. It is a new day, and we still look at the new year. For some, we are excited about a fresh start and the newness that comes with that, and others are excited about the renewal of their commitment to serve. Lord, we're here today united to see what is best for our community. And so, Lord, I pray for these councilmen and women, that you guide them, that you give them wisdom to lead us and to lead us well. God, I pray for us, the people, that you bless us with peace and you bless us with your blessings, God, your presence. We ask you all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, let us start off this year with a renewed commitment to patriotism for our country, and if you are a veteran, would you please raise your hand? Oh, my goodness, look at that. And we thank you for your service, so would you please join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Niggar?
Here, here, here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
I'm here.
Mayor Comacheri.
I am here as well, thank you. We have several presentations tonight, some of them we'll take care of right up here on the dais, so we'll dispose of those rather quickly, and then we have some service pins and some recognitions to some people who have served this city well for quite a long time. First presentation is going to be of the gavel that Mayor Edwards used for 12 months. Not a scratch on it.
Well, I'm surprised, because I was a rigorous gaveller.
Mrs. Edwards?
Sir.
You steered this ship not just admirably, but extremely well through the last-
Thank you, sir.
-12 years, and it's a pleasure to follow you. You set a great foundation, and it's appreciated by all.
Thank you, sir.
Your gavel.
I will hang it on the wall with pride. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I also get the pleasure of passing on the gavel that I've been very proud to have used, that it's not the same one, but it says something similar on it, as president of the Temecula Community Services District, and Chuck Washington will be taking over that role as president. Kind of seems like down through the years, Chuck, you and I have just kind of passed this amongst ourselves, and we've got a great staff, we've got a great leader, a great assistant leader, and the district just keeps moving right along. So Chuck, I know you're going to do a great job. Your gavel, sir.
Thank you.
And now, I don't have a gavel.
Well, you will in just a minute.
Does that mean I need to recognize you?
Yes, you need to recognize me.
Mrs. Edwards?
Because he cannot conduct this meeting until I pass this gavel to incoming Mayor Jeff Comacheri, and it is pristine, as I give it to you, for 2015. May you use it wisely and hopefully pass it on with lots of dents and dings for next year. And here's another hug.
I get two hugs tonight. Thank you, Mary Ann. I appreciate that. Now, why don't we go ahead and do a few things down at the podium, starting off with Mr. Jim Myler. Jim, you here? Come on.
It's truly special for me to recognize you, Jim, in front of everybody, and I think you're probably going to know-
I replaced you on the Community Services Commission.
That's what I was going to say. And in 1997, when I was a member of the Community Services Commission and then Rand Furman was elected to the City Council, it was Jim who replaced me. So I was just re-elected, like, for four years, so after that, you want to come up here?
Sure.
Great.
I need to.
All right. Jim, if you would indulge me to read this. "City of Temecula Certificate of Appreciation on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Jim Myler. We would like to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude for your 17 years of service on the Temecula Community Services Commission. We are grateful for your contributions of time, talent, and commitment. We appreciate your involvement and dedication to the citizens of the City of Temecula, and thank you for your service. In witness whereof, I have here to affix my hands and the official seal, this 13th day of January 2015, Jeff Comacheri, Mayor." Jim, it's a pleasure to recognize you, my friend.
Thank you. Well, I can say 17 years is enough. I didn't mean you. Last evening, I was honored by the Community Services Commission, and so many nice things were said, both by commissioners and by staff, that I was actually embarrassed. It culminated in the presentation of a beautiful poster, which I didn't bring with me tonight, but I'll be glad to show any of you if you wanted. I told the commission that I'm no longer a commissioner, so I went through all of my clothing that I've received with community service insignia. I found 38 items.
Oh, my gosh.
It's almost a complete wardrobe, but there was no underwear. Seriously, it's been a privilege to serve, and I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Did a great job for 17 years, and if any of you don't really know what the Community Services Commission does, just take a look around town at the 39 more parks, I think number 40 getting ready to come online. That's what they do. They design the parks, make sure they're maintained. They do a lot of other things, too, in the way of programming, but a lot of the great things that this city is are attributed to you and people like you, so thank you, Jim, honestly. Appreciate it.
Why don't we, we have four recipients of various levels of service pins, and the city, it's kind of become a ritual, I think most cities do it, and recognize those who have provided service, either at the staff level or the volunteer level, for five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. We may have one 25-year, I think. Anyway, want to call your name, please come up. Craig Puma?
Peg Moore, 25.
Gary Yeomans?
Hey!
Peg Moore? No, I saw you, Peg. Kite? Pat?
Where's Pat? Yep, Pat. There you go.
Well, there you are.
He's working. You're right.
Working over here.
For service on our commissions for the previous five years. Trying to close it. Craig? Thank you for the service. And another five-year pin for Pat Kite in the planning commission.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. We have a 10-year pin for Gary Yeomans, who served now for 10 years on the Traffic and Safety Commission. Thank you, Gary. And then there's Peg Moore.
First, Peggy.
You probably can't see at home, but there are some little stones that each represent five years in here. Thank you. And we don't have enough room on these pins, I think, for all the years, so this really is a 15-year pin and talks about your service on commissions, but we all know you have a legacy far beyond that. And if you don't know, Peg was one of our very, very first councilmembers in the City of Temecula when the city incorporated in 1997, and, I'm sorry.
89.
You know what? I was elected in 1997. I got confused.
89.
In 1989, you know, I should know, because my wife and I moved here in 1989, and that was the very first vote we took, we participated in, was to vote for cityhood. But Peg, you know, all of us have said over the years that the job that you and your colleagues did in those years was just amazing in terms of setting the foundation that made it so much easier for those who came after to elevate this city to what it is today, so we couldn't have done it without you, and you're still involved and you're still doing the work, and we don't want you to go anywhere.
It is definitely my pleasure to have served, and I really appreciate the work that all of you have done to come behind us, and it was, we really appreciate it. We love living here and wouldn't be anywhere else, and we think you've done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Well, we love you, Peg.
Thank you, Peg. Appreciate it. You know what? Jimmy gets too much recognition. It's Peg's turn tonight. Okay, this is time that we set aside for public comments. Total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the council addressing that item. Public comment, never mind. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item, and each speaker under those terms will be limited to five minutes. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have two speakers under public comments.
Okay, please call the first one.
The first speaker is Jimmy Moore, to be followed by Jody Christopher.
You'd get us sooner or later, Jimmy. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and staff, and all you good folks in the theater audience, and those of you at home watching Channel 3. I'm representing Cal State San Marcos OSHA program. OSHA is named after Bernard Osher, who gave a million dollars to various colleges to put on educational programs for seniors. And while we don't check ID cards, you need to be 55 years or older to attend these programs. And we've been going here in Temecula for six, seven years now, and we've got a new semester coming up, and I want to call attention, unfortunately, one of the best OSHA instructors, Jack Williams, is very ill, and we doubt whether he'll be able to teach the classes that he was supposed to teach this year. So Mondays are, unless they can get some quick substitutes, we won't be having classes we normally do. On Friday, coming up, we have some great classes. One is the, get to the right page, All About Health with Dr. Phil. Not the Dr. Phil you see on television, but this is Dr. Phil Gudzinski, who's a retired Navy Admiral, I believe he was, Captain or Admiral, and a doctor, and he puts outstanding programs on health, and he's well worth listening to. He'll be teaching a five-week class starting February the 13th. We have another class that Marilyn Ribble will teach starting February, or starting April the 10th, which is on Winston Churchill, uncommon and unlikely man of his time. And I think we all know who Winston Churchill is, at least the ones on the dais look old enough to know that. The ones out in the audience might not all be familiar with him, but he was a great, great part of our history and English history. Also, we have Douglas Barker is going to teach art from 1850 to the present day, and he's a well-educated, good representative for presenting art, so if you like art, that's it. Then, in April, you'll have yours truly Jimmy Moore, teaching a class called Great American Music, Broadway Musicals, Part One of Part Two. I'll teach the other one next, at the end of the summer, probably, but it's going to go from vaudeville minstrels, and we end up just about the time Broadway takes off in the first part, and then the second part, we'll cover Broadway. I have left some brochures out in the audience, or out in the lobby. If you're interested, you can search OSHA or OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, Cal State San Marcos, and they have a website. You can register online, and we invite all of you who would like to gain more knowledge and also good camaraderie and friendship with the fellow students that we have here at OSHA.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Jody Christopher, to be followed by Vicki Long.
Mr. Christopher, good evening.
Mayor, good to see you again, councilmembers, staff. I'm just up here to thank you again for reconsidering our grant proposal. You've got us on Agenda Item Number Six, and I just wanted to say, since the inception of our food, Veterans Food Program, we have provided 18,000 meals to veterans in our local area, and just in Temecula since January 1st, today's the 13th, we've already provided 504 meals out of our funded program just this year in Temecula. So it's a good program. Thank you, guys, for reconsidering it, and that's all I got. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Please relay to all the veterans who you work with and those who you help as well, that we're proud of all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the final speaker is Vicki Long.
Ms. Long?
I just came to tell you all Happy New Year, wish you a good year, and drop off my calendars for you.
Well, thank you very much.
In this time, so hope you all have a great year. So I'll leave them over here.
Thank you, Ms. Long. You do the same. Okay, that takes us to council reports, reports by members of the council on matters not on the agenda will be made at this time, and a total not to exceed 10 minutes is devoted to these reports, and I'm sure all my colleagues at my first meeting as mayor this time around are going to try and trick me and talk for an hour and a half, so total of 10 minutes, guys. Mr. Washington?
I don't really have-
You're done, thank you.
I don't have anything to say, but I know that Mr. Niggar would like to speak, so I'm going to introduce him.
Thank you. I don't see you in the queue, but would you like to speak?
I am in the queue, and how did he push his button after me and I didn't get in the queue?
You have to work that out with him.
You've got something afoot, okay. Thank you for the introduction. I would have been a little more elaborate if I were introducing you, but-
Yeah, close. 30 seconds left.
Thank you. A couple of things. I've been talking to my subcommittee colleague of Mayor Comacheri regarding our special needs park. I believe that we're due shortly to be able to have a ribbon cutting for that park sometime around February the 2nd, but I want to hold off on that or wait until we launch, if we can, and with council's concurrence, a naming contest for the park, and kick that over to the Community Service Commission, kind of charge them with working with the R. Nicholas Foundation and the rest of the special needs community to come up with a name for the park. I'm going to just sort of emphasize that it not be named after anybody or any one organization. I'd like to, for it to connote, as you and I discussed, in a non-clinical way, the purpose of the park, and that's inclusion but fun, and with concurrence to my council colleagues. And then, when we cut the ribbon, we name the park at the same time. Okay?
Sounds good, unless there's an objection, Mr. Adams, if you'd see that that gets agendized for the TCSD Commission?
Sure.
We'll have to move pretty quickly on it and have TCSD reach out. And then, lastly, I'm sure it'll come up with Community Services, but, you know, we had such a fantastic Christmas season, amazing work by our police and fire departments and our community service staff, I mean, almost, just almost went off flawless, and so I just want to extend my thanks to them, and a Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Niggar. Councilmember Ron? That's a nice ring, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, you know, we, like you said, we replaced one Ron with another, so not a lot's changed, except I'm not grumpy, usually.
Oh, oh!
But- Day up here, and already you're slinging bombs.
I told you he'd fit right in.
Well, I don't have an official report, per se, but just wanted to, again, thank the community for bringing me into the City Council, and also to let folks know, I've been trying to get up to speed as much as possible with all of the goings-on of the city, reading all the documents I can, and met with all the executive staff, and I think most importantly, the city attorney, so I don't break any laws in my first week here. And I think there's some real exciting programs that we've been talking about with the different departments, and so hopefully we get a chance to start to roll out some of those ideas in the next few weeks.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Mrs. Edwards?
So you've learned the council song and the secret handshake, and you've gotten your secret decoder ring, and the hazing has begun. Yep, he's ready to go. I think everybody was pleasantly surprised by the snow that we received the day before New Year's, so I can't tell you how many pictures have been exchanged. Do we have any pictures up on the city website right now? Are there any pictures up? Yes? 100 pictures up on the website? Yeah, lots of pictures up on the website, and I just wanted to-
On the city's Facebook account, we had a link, Flickr linked to a lot of-
Jonathan, do you have handy that beautiful picture of Old Town on the evening of the 30th in the snow?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Put it up. Sometime during the meeting, he'll put it up.
Okay, that's all I wanted, was to see if you could put it up, and so, Happy New Year, everybody. I think it would be really nice if Mayor Comacheri could make it snow, too, so I'm going to throw that down for you.
You're so kind.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
By the way, I can't make it snow, but I did coin the title for that event. It was the Great Blizzard of 2014 in Temecula, so you'll always remember, you can tell your grandchildren about that.
You did bring gas prices down, though, didn't you?
I brought gas prices down, yeah.
I believe those were coming down while, I don't know, I was still mayor. I just want to throw that out there, but, okay.
Is this going to go on like until about November or so?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we're past 10 minutes. Just let me-
Well, if you wouldn't have spoken so long. Okay, let's move on with the agenda. All matters listed under consent calendar, and that's the portion of the meeting we're at now, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. Will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Item two, approve the action minutes of December 9, 2014. Item three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve and file the city treasurer's report as of November 30, 2014. Item five, receive and file financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30, 2014. Item six, approve recommendation for community service funding for California Veterans of Foreign War Motorcycle Club for fiscal year 2014-15. Gentlemen. Item 17, approve U.S. House of Representatives District Office Lease Amendment with Congressman Duncan Hunter at the Temecula Civic Center, and that's at my request on the agenda. Item eight, approve the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for the Labor Agreement and Modification of the Management Compensation Plan. Item nine, approve purchase and sale agreement between the City of Temecula and Wild Rivers Temecula LLC for the sale of approximately 17.47 acres located westerly of Diaz Road and Dendi Parkway, and that's APN 909370002. Item 10, approve the exclusive negotiating agreement with Truax Development for the potential disposition of property located on Main Street in the City of Temecula, APNs 922360004, 5, 6, and 7. And item 11, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Counseling Services with Renal Clark for Fire Station 73 Living Quarters Update Public Works Project 13-07.
Tell move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Edwards, second by Mr. Washington.
Quick comment on number nine.
Yes, Mr. Niggar.
Just so the public knows, that purchase and sale agreement with Wild Rivers is for our long hope for and awaited water park. Hopefully, this time it will go through, so keep it in your prayers and hopes, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Niggar. You know, while we're at it, there are a couple of things on here that just require a little bit of explanation for the benefit of the public. Item 10, which is the suggested approval of the exclusive negotiating agreement with Truax Development, that pertains to the two half-acre parcels right on either side of the Civic Center Park, right out here at our front door, that has always been in the plan to develop into something spectacular, right, Mr. Truax? Thank you. And we're really looking forward to that project moving forward. It's going to be quite an enhancement for Old Town, should we decide to move forward with that. And then also, on the item where we're renovating Fire Station Number 73, the firefighters that work out of that station have had woefully inadequate facilities for a long time, and, you know, funding is always difficult, and you try to prioritize what you've got, but it's high time we upgraded those facilities for those men and women who are keeping our city safe, so we're really happy to move that forward. And with that, we do have a motion and a second.
Quick comment on number 11, too.
Sure.
Just, I know we talked to our new fire chief about the services provided out of that station, and there won't be any changes in times, response times, or services to the city, and so they've got a good plan in place to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Okay, let's cast our votes. The consent calendar passes unanimously, 5-0. We're going to move into a different phase of the meeting here tonight, the meeting of the Temecula Community Services District Board, and I'm going to turn this over to President Chuck Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam City Clerk, please let the record reflect that all of the directors are present. Do we have requests to speak under public comment?
We do. We have one speaker, Wayne Hall.
Okay, I'll read the rules. Total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the Board of Directors on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the Board of Directors on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or district business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the City Clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for those items. Can you call the first speaker, please?
Wayne Hall, please.
Happy New Year, Wayne.
Happy New Year, everybody. And no more snow.
Aw, come on. Get your sled out.
I spent three tours in Korea. No more snow.
Come on.
Tonight, I want to talk about something I saw in the newspaper Saturday. Kind of hit me pretty hard, so I called some friends and found out some interesting things. You know that Temecula celebrates the Fourth of July like no other? Christmas parades and everything else, and Veterans Day. I had a tear in my eye, so I'm Veterans Day. But there's some other people here in Temecula that are overlooked, and that's our police and fire. These are the people who see us at our worst in some times. They've seen me. Where they're pulling us out of a wreck, burglary, fires, we're sick or hurt, but they don't have a national day for firefighting. a national day for firefighters and law enforcement, the blue and green. I'd like to see, like, and we can do better. Here in Temecula, I was thinking with some of my friends, like a spring festival, but it's slated for police and fire, and for their families, not, oh, yeah, I mean, fire trucks are great, and police helicopters are great, but this is for their family, where we can have a concert, and maybe at the CRC, a, a festival day or something, and celebrating spring at the same time. But these people are long overdue, because they've seen us not at our best, but could we do our best for them? Could we recognize them and their families? A friend of mine said he was sitting, babysitting his grandson, and his daughter was going off to work, and she was putting on her bulletproof vest and her uniform, and she was heading out, and it just dawned on him, I hope she comes back that evening. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. I think we all agree with you, I think Mr. Niggar has a comment, but thank you for coming to the podium.
Well, we, you know, I, I just can't say enough, the veteran, you know, I'm a combat vet, yes, I've got the scars to prove it, but our own community has heroes, too, and I'd like to see them get a good pat on the back, and maybe a good hug. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr.? Mr. Niggar, you still wanna?
Yeah, I do. Mr. President, you know, I'm kind of appreciative that Wayne brought that up. You know, throughout the country, law enforcement, public safety in general, but primarily law enforcement is, is just getting hammered for many different reasons, and yet, here we enjoy such a high level of public safety, and I remember last year, a year before that one, I was mayor, I had the honor of speaking, I believe it was the 25th anniversary of the death of Kent Hintergard. And we have a park named after Officer Hintergard, and I remember some of the things that were said, but one thing that was really poignant is, we expect these people to put on a uniform, ordinary people, put on a uniform, go out there, be the nicest people in the world, help rescue cats and help people cross the street, and at any given moment, stop a bank robbery or put themselves in harm's way, it's just the extremes are so radical. Can we try to maybe, just, I don't know that we have an annual day, but can we look at sometime this year, somewhere, to just have a day, a Saturday, a la, a public safety, I should say, Appreciation Day, whatever that is, and I wouldn't mind, and I know my colleagues here wouldn't mind, if we're cooking hamburgers or doing something, but just to say thank you for being the sixth safest city in the United States of America.
You know, Mike, I think your comments are heartfelt, I'm gonna get to you, Jeff, Mr. Mayor, here in a second. For me, this Thursday, I'm planning to go to a graduating class for new sheriffs Thursday evening. I think all too often, we fail to honor those that put themselves out in front to provide safety for us, but, Mr. Mayor, please-
And I support that, and just an idea, later on in this meeting, we're going to be doling out all the subcommittee appointments and assignments that we do once a year, and why don't we see those appointments through, and then let's figure out where something like that fits best, and let that subcommittee tackle how best to recognize our men and women in uniform.
And so, moving forward, Mr. City Manager, I, I see a lot of heads nodding up here. After we've finished with our committee formation, and we decide what the appropriate committee might be, and the mayor can take the lead on that, but perhaps we can come back with something that either Community Services somehow come up with some ideas of how we might have a day where we recognize perhaps all of our first responders to provide public safety for us as a community.
We can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. No other comments about that? Thanks again, Wayne, for coming up. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any of those requests? None?
Move, consent.
Item 12 is approve minutes of December 9th. Item 13, receive and file financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30th, 2014. We have a motion by the mayor, and a second by Councilmember Edwards. Please register your votes. Mary Ann, do you need to push his button?
No, I pushed my button.
We're good.
Okay. That motion carries 5-0. Directors' report? Nothing tonight. General Managers' report?
Jonathan, do we have that photo that was referenced earlier? Maybe we can just throw that up real quick, council requested.
Isn't that beautiful?
Bedford Falls, I like that, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I seem to have something laying here at this location.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll deal with that later.
Okay.
Yeah. He knows he's got it coming.
I know. Okay.
We'll make sure he gets what he's got coming.
Okay. The big hammer.
I'm not sure I like the way you said that.
Okay, are there any comments or final reports from directors? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move, adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
We adjourn on a vote of four to one.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Meeting, Board Directors' Meeting. Let the record show, Madam Clerk, that all the directors are here this evening. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
We do not.
Thank you. Then we'll dispense with the reading of the rules. We have two items under consent calendar tonight. Item 14, approve the action minutes of the meeting of October 14th, 2014, and item 15, receive and file financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30th, 2014. Motion by Mr. Washington, second by Mrs. Edwards. Please cast your vote. And that carries unanimously. We will now adjourn to the next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 27th, at 5:30 PM, in closed session. Any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none, this meeting will stand adjourned, and we will now reconvene to the Temecula City Council meeting. Under City Council Business, first item, item 16, is a receive and file item, receive and file the Global Citizens Viticulture Hospitality Vocational Program update, and that's at the request of Councilmember Niggar. Mike, would you say a word to kick it off?
Yeah, certainly. I think we've gone through two cycles. I think it's important that the council get an update as to how the program's working, we're allocating funds for it, we also, the program also received a grant from Autism Speaks, which is, is amazing, to put it on the radar screen for Autism Speaks, that grant amount was $25,000. But I'm also curious, and hopefully we'll get an update, on where some of these participants are going, if they're getting employment, if they're going on to further education. I think that's real important, because that was the purpose of the program, so.
Great, can we have that presentation? Who's gonna give it?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start it off. Good evening, Mayor Comacherio and council members. Tonight, we have a brief receive and file update report regarding the Global Citizens Viticulture Hospitality Vocational Program. As you may recall, this city-sponsored program is a unique joint partnership between several interest groups desiring to positively influence the lives of those with special needs. This evening, we will hear from key staff members who are directly responsible for successfully planning, programming, and implementing the program, as well as participants that have benefited and supported the program. At this time, I'll hand the presentation over to Supervisor Candace Adkison-Floor from our Human Services Team.
Good evening, Mayor Comacherio, council, and staff. We're going to give you an update, I'd like to start with the history and objectives and the background of this program. The City of Temecula Youth Master Plan recognized the need to provide vocational training, opportunities for youth with special needs. Eighty percent of adults with disabilities and are unemployed, and those with jobs, only 20% have full-time jobs. Summer of 2013, the City of Temecula successfully launched a vocational training program, Global Citizens Vocational Program, basic life and job skills training. Winter of 2013, the Sparrow Project was introduced to Councilman Niggar, the City Managers Economic Development Office, and TCSD, to discuss the possible information of a partnership for an agricultural-based training program that would teach viticulture to individuals with special needs. Resort of this previous vocational program led to the development and joint partnership with Sparrow Project to launch a curriculum specializing in viticulture and hospitality while utilizing the Mount San Jacinto College curriculum as a framework. Today, the program has successfully completed a year of equipping youth and young adults with job skills and life skills to prepare them for employment in viticulture and hospitality. At this time, I would like to introduce Mary Takavorian, Recreation Leader and Co-facilitator of the program.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'd like to begin by discussing some of the program's outcomes and accomplishments. We are pleased to announce that 50% of our students have, have exited the program with jobs and internships in various fields. A hundred, excuse me, 100% of our students have completed a customer service certification and have acquired a food handler's card, a completed resume and cover letter, and interviewing job preparedness and job readiness skills. The program has raised awareness featured in the press, KVCR-TV channel, and throughout the business community. Additionally, students have developed new skills, new friendships, a sense of belonging, improved quality of life, have been included in employment opportunities, and are staying productive and contributing to their community. In regards to the future of the program, the next quarter is tentatively scheduled to begin this March. We look forward to increasing the number of students that we serve through this fiscal year. Further, we'd like to identify additional grants for an employment initiative, develop new partnerships with Department of Rehabilitation, and develop a job placement program working closely with the business community. At this time, I'd like to invite Andrew Vordahl, Recreation Assistant and the program's co-facilitator, to present some of the highlights of this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and fellow staff. As part of the curriculum for the 2014 session, participants were introduced to the basic components of viticulture, the science, the agriculture, the business, and the hospitality. To meet their individual learning needs, we provided both in-class and in-the-field field experiences. The goal of these sessions were to guide the students through the grape-growing cycle. Highlights of some of these sessions were a tour of Ponte Winery, a science grape lab, special guest speakers, hospitality training, as well as field experiences at Sparrow Vineyards. As you can see by some of these pictures, we have our lessons on grapevine management, as well as the morphology of the grapevine. Some of these pictures here are of our grape lab at Cal State San Marcos Temecula Satellite Campus, as well as some of the field experiences at our local Mary Phillips Senior Center And moving on to our fall 2014 session of the program, we kind of continued where the spring session ended. The goal of this session was to get the participants familiar with the harvest and post-harvest activities that occur in the wineries. Some of the highlights of this program include grape stomping, event planning, grape harvesting, and hospitality training. As you can see in these photos, we have harvested grapes at Sparrow Vineyards. We also had lessons on learning when grapes are ready to harvest, as well as another tour of Callaway Winery, and some grape crushing activities for the students that they really enjoyed. At this time, I'd like to invite Melanie Brown to talk about her experiences of the program.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, sir. Hi, I'm Melanie Brown. I've been an intern with the City of Temecula for the past three years. I started with the December 2012 Global Citizen Program, that's how my internship started. I'm here to talk about my experience with the Viticulture Hospitality Program. It's been a good experience for me. The program has educated me all about the aspects of winemaking and how to harvest. Also, part of the program, we learn how to, you know, no, sorry. Part of the program, we learn, you know, different aspects of how to spot, you know, disease, insects. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous.
You're doing great.
Fine. We also learned how to, we also learned how to prune, we also learned how to harvest, what grapes are good for harvesting, which are not. And we also, one of our field experiences, we also did a little bit of, our own wine stopping at Sparrow Vineyards, so that was fun. All in all, this was a great classroom experience. That tied everything together, I really enjoyed, I felt I learned a lot from Andrew and Mary, and I appreciate you guys' continued support of the Viticulture and Hospitality Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
At this time, I would also like to introduce Mark Woodsmalle, Board Member of Sparrow Vineyards.
Evening, Mark.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my honor tonight to present to you the Sparrow Project and to share some of the developments with respect to building critical mass for the project for long-term sustainability. On the evening that the council considered the request for funding, then Mayor Edwards made it clear that part of the way that this project would be successful into the future was by exploring and cultivating those long-term relationships with our nonprofits. I'm pleased to report that as of today's date, 501(c)(3) has been formally established for Sparrow. I'm also super excited to share with you that the project has received one of 13 grants throughout the country from Autism Speaks, the largest grant amount possible, $25,000. These funds, the only grant in Southern California, not only acknowledge Temecula's leadership role in the support of our adults with developmental disabilities and their brighter futures, but also establishes, in my opinion, Temecula's role as a leader in this all-important initiative. So, on behalf of my wife, Evan, I, who are absolutely honored to be in partnership with the city, and certainly proud to be a constituent, we are grateful for your support and super proud to announce the results that we have for you tonight.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations.
Wonderful.
This is the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, we can answer those at this time.
Any questions?
Outstanding.
I have a comment.
I have a quick one. It just, I know the Cal State San Marcos campus at Temecula is developing programs in viticulture and ecology, so I'd really recommend reaching out to them, and if you need a contact there, I can help with that. But also, it just so happens that our president of our local RCD is sitting here in the audience, and I know they're very involved in agriculture and watershed management, soil management, and so forth, and it seems, you know, they were established to sort of be a response to the Dust Bowl and, you know, making agriculture more productive, and so, seems like a natural fit, and so, Ms. Long, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to folks, there might be a nice connection with that agency as well.
Great, thank you, Matt. Mary Ann?
I, I remember the, the night that, that we first met, and you came, and, and we talked about the program, and, and how we were gonna make it work with partnerships and funding, and it's always easier just to, to give money and wish you well and send you on your way, but, and I remember being so firm and saying, we've got to develop these partnerships, and we've got to work with local nonprofits, and pushing, and pushing, and pushing, and then here we are, and, and the reason that's so critical is, it, it's all about the grants, because the grants want to see those partnerships, and they want to see that sustainability and that, that long-term, you know, the community building, and so, here you are, and it's just wonderful, I'm so proud of you, and I'm so proud of everything that you've done, and the way that it has morphed into this community-wide project, and it's, you've just done exactly what, you know, we had hoped that you would do, and aren't you so proud? Yeah, and, and just thrilled about the outcome, so congratulations, great job, staff, wonderful, wonderful outcome, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for the presentation. We look forward to hearing more after the next phase is completed and getting another update, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One, there's one other individual that deserves being recognized, and she's not here, but that's Yvette Martinez, and she was instrumental to this entire team in putting forth the success for this last 12 months, so just a shout-out to Yvette for a job well done.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, that was the presentation, no action is required, and we move on to item 17 on the agenda, is approval of the selection of 2015 City Council Committees. This is always a bit of an arduous task up here, in that there's an awful lot to do, but what we're going to do, how we're gonna handle it this year, is there are six different categories, and- So, with that, why don't we just move on? Category number one are the liaisons to the various committees and commissions, the city. What I'll do is I'll go through what the actual item is and who's currently charged with that responsibility, and we can determine whether that's going to continue or needs to change. Community Services Commission Liaison, Chuck, I think that ought to move to you as more traditional, as the President of the District.
I was going to go ahead and just make that motion, that I vacate local, Old Town Local Review Board, move into Community Services, and perhaps Mr. Ron would like to pick up the vacancy that I've created.
Would you like that, Matt?
On the Old Town?
Yes. Yeah, okay. And then, Planning, Mr. Nigara, I'm assuming you'd like to continue?
Might as well.
And same on Traffic Safety?
Mm-hmm, I would love to.
So, those will remain the same. Section Number Two is to appoint two members of the City Council to serve on each of the following standing committees. Arts and Cultural Affairs Committee, which was formerly an ad hoc committee, now is a standing committee. That's been myself and Mrs. Edwards. If there's no objection, it's just as soon as we continue?
Yep.
City Sustainability Program Committee has been Mr. Roberts and Mr. Washington.
Perhaps Mr. Ron would like to join me on that. I would like to keep that.
Absolutely.
Matt, okay?
Good choice.
E-Government and Temecula Outreach Committee, which was also formerly an ad hoc committee, and that's Marion Edwards and myself. Isn't that okay?
So, I did have one question.
Sure.
And I know we made this change some time back, but early on in my tenure up here, we had a technology liaison, and that was me, because nobody else was interested. And then when we had the fires in the fall of '07, we created Temecula Outreach as a part of that effort to be more communicative with the community about what was going on. I would like to have still some role to play in that.
You can have my job on there.
Okay.
Happily.
All right.
Got that, Randy? Okay. Economic Development Committee is, was Mr. Washington and Mr. Roberts. Obviously, Mr. Roberts is no longer on any committees.
I'd like to do that one. I've always wanted to do ED, and I did work at the Economic Development Corporation for four years and came to the city with the economic development background, if you gentlemen would so approve.
Mr. Adams, I'm sorry. Could you clarify the purpose of this committee?
Yeah, the Economic Development Committee, it's served in the past, it's served a variety of functions. Primarily, we've been fortunate to review economic development sponsorship applications, much like CS funding, in-kind support. That always has funneled through the Economic Development Subcommittee in the spring, and then that gets translated and packaged for the City Council, then rolls into our operating budget, so that's one specific assignment that this Subcommittee serves. But throughout the year, on various projects and updates, the potential economic development projects that are coming in, we've used the Subcommittee in the past to sit down and get some policy direction.
So, it's a review of various things and then funding when funding comes up?
Yeah, the fundings and the sponsorships are the, is the big function for the Subcommittee.
Okay, thanks. Chuck, did you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to provide some examples, obviously. Race for the Cure, Balloon and Wine Festival, Taste of Temecula has grown, Reality Rally are examples of some events that the city has provided, at the very least. And when I first got elected, we were not actually quantifying the value of our in-kind support, which now for many years we have done, and that's been a good thing, because we need to know what it's costing us, but we need to also need to know what the value of that is in contribution to that effort. And the organizations don't always ask for direct funding, but what I was going to talk about was that, you know, I've been doing it for a long time, and I enjoy doing that, but I think it might be something that maybe we kind of rotate every couple of years so that everybody gets an opportunity to look at some of those committee positions so that they better understand. When the recommendations come to the council from a committee, and then it's at this point in the process, it's kind of difficult to ask questions, hard questions, at that point. And I think if all of us have had an opportunity to serve on those finance committees, it might make for better understanding and better support of the events that we're putting money out there for.
In addition to special events, there are, there's groups to, that are considered for funding, like the Chamber of Commerce.
Mm-hmm.
That's also part of the package that comes through the Subcommittee as well.
How about Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Ron?
Can you tell me what the relationship is between that committee and any of the activities that EDC is doing?
And I don't have a problem with that nomination, but I would suggest if we are going to begin a rotation, that we stagger it so that, so we don't have two brand-new members to the committee.
And I agree with that. I'm sorry, if I may, because I've been talking with the city manager a little bit about this too, and you mentioned committees, and it certainly seems to me that at this point, that's a good idea for more than just this committee, but for any of the committees who have responsibility or for recommendations on funding should rotate, and everybody should have a chance to do that, for a number of reasons. One, it gets everybody here engaged, and also then, you know, the, take TCSD funding, which you two gentlemen have done a magnificent job on, and it's been a long time, and the recommendations coming forward tend to look the same, because the same agencies are coming to you, and they need that funding, and they've been granted, and all that, I think, has been great. But I do think there comes a time when it's healthy to open it up, not just to others here on the council, but to others who feel that it's an open process, and so, and it is, but they may not feel that way, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we were to follow my recommendation, for example, and Mrs. Edwards comes on the Economic Development Subcommittee, and I would continue serving for one year, and then on an annual basis, she would serve to?
I appreciate that, Mr. Washington, but having been here, what, on the council, what, ten years? I wouldn't really worry about me being a new member to the Economic Development Committee, because I served on finance for a number of years and funding.
I don't think you heard what I was saying. If I may, I don't think that's the issue.
Oh, I was thinking he was saying that I wasn't familiar with the process or something.
No, what I'm saying is that if we fill Mrs. Edwards into that position?
Oh, you mean two at the same time, and we're rotating them at the same time?
Then I serve for one year, she serves for two.
Yeah, I got it.
And then a year from now, assuming I'm still here.
I don't know that I'd assume that.
You're not recalled.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't know that I would.
So, that would be, I think, the most effective means. That would be my proposal.
You mean for rotation purposes?
For rotating. We don't bring two brand-new in simultaneously, that we stagger them.
If I may, I like that. I agree with that. Can we not make that a practice, though? In other words, let's take it as it comes, and the reason being is, there's a lot of value to continuity and institutional knowledge. I've been on the community service funding for fifteen years now, and you know what? I think it's time I let somebody else.
You're getting beaten up a little bit. No, it's natural, you do on that committee.
Well, yeah, but it's, and it's okay, but, you know, behind the scenes, I served with Councilmember Edwards, and I've served with the Councilmember Washington, and you start learning about all these organizations and what they do, and are they doing it well, and there's a little bit of an art and an investigation that goes through it, and so, changing it every two years, in that sense, may not be productive. Getting a couple of council members to hold that for three, four years, five years is probably beneficial to staff as well. Anyway, we can just make that decision on the fly. I just didn't want a new policy to go into effect that we're starting to stagger.
And I think that that's wise, to maintain that flexibility. I mean, I would recommend, I like where Mr. Washington's going in terms of a one-year member and a two-year member, so that every year one is replaced, but it may be going forward that that's not the appropriate way to do it. We need to be open to that, I agree.
Yeah, and that's just a start.
Right.
Then, once the pattern is sort of established, each person will get an opportunity to serve on that Subcommittee for two years, which is half of a four-year term.
Sure, sure.
I think the point being that we don't get so comfortable in these positions that we get lazy.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if we are to institute sort of a rotation, that we don't kick out both members at the same time, so that there's some institutional knowledge.
I think we're all of the same mind. Does anybody disagree?
No, it's good. I actually, you know what, there's, we all got comfortable, okay? And of course, having a new member on the council sort of mixes things up and opens up some possibilities.
Yeah, it's a time for change, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. Okay, so we've got Washington and Edwards with the thought, and we'll see what happens next year. I agree with Mr. Nigara, but the thought that next year when we go through this, Mr. Washington will be replaced, Mrs. Edwards will continue, but that's not set in stone. That's just kind of the direction we're taking. Old Town Steering Committee, we have Nigara and Roberts.
Like to, if I'm going to be on the local review board, I think it might make sense to serve on that as well.
I think that's a, that's a good mix. I'd be willing to step off of this if somebody else wanted it, but I'll certainly happy to serve on it if.
You got it. You're welcome.
Okay. You sure?
Yes. Finance Committee, isn't this another one that we're thinking about rotating?
A different kind of beast, as opposed to giving money out. This is one where, well, you know, we've done some things where we've talked about refinancing bonds and that sort of thing, and I believe ultimately the entire council gets briefed before anything happens, when we're talking about something as large as that.
Corporate sponsorship program came out of the Finance Committee.
Well, but that was a little bit unusual.
CDVG also goes through the Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, yeah, that's true, CDVG. So, yeah, so, okay.
And in theory?
We did some CFD refinancing.
Yes.
We refinanced the debt on City Hall, but again, everybody got briefed on those things. It wasn't like there was a, there wasn't a Subcommittee recommendation, I don't think, that came out of.
And let's remember, as we're, for the public's benefit, as we're doling out these assignments, all of the, almost all of the committees that we're assigning provide recommendations to the full council. They don't have authority to make the ultimate decisions, they only make recommendations. More times than not, those recommendations are followed, because the Subcommittee rolls up their sleeves and does their homework, and the recommendations that come forward are very strong, so. But what do you think, everybody, on that one?
If somebody had a desire to serve on that, I'd be happy to vacate. If not, I'm happy to stay on it and continue the work.
I've done that one recently, so.
Yeah, I have no problem keeping it the way it is.
Okay, all right.
You know, I think, again, with the thought that, that's not necessarily meant to be forever, that, you know, because in the past, we've just, and we were all the same people then, and, you know, it was different, and so, we kind of went through this in ten minutes and said, "Well, I'll do the same things."
Right, right.
So, okay, so that will remain the same. Infrastructure Beautification Committee is Edwards and Nigara.
We have a beautiful city. I don't see why we should change anything.
We do. Keep it the same, okay?
And we don't meet that often, so we aren't burned out yet.
Keep the city beautiful. Joint City Council Temecula by School District Committee is Edwards and Washington.
We don't meet that often either.
I think that's a good group.
Is that one active at all? And the reason why, when I say active, I mean, is it doing anything or has it done anything? And you've got an interesting dynamic right now. You have three brand-new school board members. Relationships right now are paramount between the city and the school district, and so, I see this committee as being a lot more active going forward than it might have been in the past. Do my colleagues share that?
I would suggest that we ask the city manager to reach out to the school district. If a meeting can be established and there's some benefit sometime this year, then I'd be willing to continue to serve. But when was the last time we met? Not in the last two or three years.
Yeah, as a, oh, longtime, as a committee, I meet with the school district pretty regularly, but not as officially.
Well, you actually serve on both, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
City Council and the school board.
It feels like it sometimes, but.
Okay, well, in any event, we'll keep the same committee members, and, you know, Mr. City Manager, in the past, we've, under very infrequent circumstances, we've had a joint meeting, maybe once or twice in the last fifteen years. Maybe the fact that there are a bunch of new members on the, on the school board and one on our body, you might just discuss that with the superintendent and get their feelings. If that's something the school district would want to do, I think we would be amenable to that as well. Okay? Okay. The Myriota Temecula Committee, Mr. Nigara and Mr. Washington. We're at peace, so you must be doing a good job.
I have to hold him back.
Can you say Diaz wrote?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't start now.
Okay, same.
Um.
You guys want to stick with it?
Sure.
Sure, I don't mind.
Done. Preparation Committee, that's formerly an ad hoc, has been Mr. Washington and myself.
Mr. Mayor? If I could add something to that, before you consider this Subcommittee formation? Earlier in the meeting, you had asked about where does a police and fire appreciation special event-type planning fit cleanly into the Subcommittee list, and I've only can come up with two without creating a new Subcommittee. One would be the Park and Recreation Subcommittee. The other option I might throw out there could just be the mayor and the mayor pro tem, so I'll leave it to the council to decide.
Well, how about the traffic and safety person?
That would provide one council member if it's the desire to have two council members in a Subcommittee.
Doesn't it make sense to roll one into this committee?
You know, we, we used to call that department Parks and Rec, and it's become Community Services many years ago, because it goes beyond that.
Right.
And this particular activity or event that you're talking about goes beyond that. Would it, would it, you know, be amenable to the council to rename that to Community Services Committee, or?
You know, without going through the whole list, I would think that that might step on toes of other committees that deal with other issues that may be part of Community Services but not part of Parks and Rec.
So, this event we're talking about, is there someplace else where it might fall? It's more like Community Services?
I was thinking, I was thinking Park and Rec could be the logical Subcommittee to discuss and plan appropriate event, given the nature of Community Services and what you guys do day in, day out.
I don't see another committee that deals with Community Services.
I was thinking, I was thinking the mayor and the mayor pro tem could be another Subcommittee to assign to that if that was.
Okay, I'm not trying to rock the boat.
But I can't come up with another Subcommittee, given the list that we have in front of us.
You know, the, if we keep the Parks and Rec Committee intact, which is Mr. Washington and I, we are the mayor, mayor pro tem, so what's the difference?
This year.
So, if there's no objection, can we keep Chuck and I on that committee and go forward?
Sure.
Sure.
Public Works Committee, Mrs. Edwards, and we need to replace Mr. Roberts, one or both?
I nominate Mr. Nigara.
No. No.
Why are you laughing? Everybody needs Public Works.
Because he was so quick at it, and he's pushing my buttons, and I don't know why. Okay, see, I have to.
Mr. Nigara, do you want to be on this committee?
Why'd you nominate me?
Will you, will you accept being on this committee?
Because of your extensive experience in dealing with.
Planning.
I'll take that. I'll take that answer as non-responsive. Mr. Ron, would you like to?
I'll second that, so.
Do you want to be, do you want to be it?
That's all yours.
He's seconding my motion.
Where would we be without Public Works?
For the record, that's Mrs. Edwards and Mr. Nigara.
Okay.
We would be in deep.
Southwest Cities Coalition Committee.
We not?
Mr. Adams, is that still alive? Are there any plans to meet? I think that's a good effort, but only if we get together from time to time.
Actually, it should be still alive, because there are a number of things coming up that we should be meeting on.
Oh, I agree.
Yes.
But is it? It's not just, it's all the other cities.
No, but we were kind of the driving force.
I think there's, I think there's value in keeping this Subcommittee together, especially of late. There's some regional things that would behoove us to have two council members to work through some of these policy issues.
Okay, so, anybody else want to be on it? I think we'll keep it if nobody does.
I think mayor pro tem, Washington, would be perfect with councilmember Edwards.
I lobbied for it when we formed it, and Mr. Comerchero wanted it desperately, so I'm going to let him keep it.
I already crossed my name, I'm putting.
good effort, but only if we get together from time to time.
Actually, it should be still alive because there are a number of things coming up that we should be meeting on.
Oh, I agree.
Yes.
But is it? It's not just, it's all the other cities.
No, but we were kind of the driving force.
I think there's value in keeping this Subcommittee together, especially of late. There's some regional things that would behoove us to have two council members to work through some of these policy issues.
Okay, so, anybody else want to be on it? I think we'll keep it if nobody does.
I think Mayor Pro Tem Washington would be perfect with Mayor, with Councilmember Edwards.
I, I lobbied for it when we formed it, and Mr. Comerchero wanted it desperately, so I'm going to let him keep it.
I'm already across my name. I'm putting your name in, Chuck.
No, I nominate, my motion is for Chuck and Mary Ann.
Okay, turnabout's a fair play.
All right, that's Edwards and Washington on that one.
Okay.
Sure, kick me off. Go ahead.
So, we need to talk because there are some things already.
Youth Family Health Regional Task Force, that's Nigar and Edwards. Unless anybody wants to come off there, I don't see any reason to change that.
No, that's working well.
Okay, that takes care of that section. Now, Section Three is to appoint members of the City Council to serve on each of the following representative assignments for external organizations, and these do not include a stipend, which is a different category. So, Animal Shelter Liaison to the, and JPA Representative has been Mrs. Edwards. Want to continue?
I don't know anything about it. I've never even had a pet.
Just speak up if anybody disagrees.
Edwards is good, yes.
League of California Congress, 2015 Voting Delegate. Historically, that has been the mayor with the mayor pro tem as an alternate. However.
How open are you guys to changing that? Because I have a interest in the League of California cities, particularly in sort of the legislative aspects at the sort of state level, and review, and establishing sort of an institutional tracking and response system for that.
I have no objection to that. And frankly, I will not be attending, but I think legally it needs to be the mayor, mayor pro tem.
We try.
However, I think, and would, no, yeah, well, Randy would know.
No, actually, it's, it just needs to be the individuals that are selected as the primary and the alternate voting delegation by the legislative body. Typically, it is the mayor or mayor pro tem, but it does not have to be. It's whoever you five choose.
Well, as I say, I'm not going to be attending, so I have no problem. Mary Ann, are you going to be going, do you know?
So, how many do we have to?
One person and an alternate.
Okay, then I'm, I'm in a position now with my work that I can, that I can participate.
Okay, so, are you amenable to having Matt be the primary and you be the alternate?
Sure.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
I can go now.
National League of Cities Annual Congress, that one I'm not going to give up unless you throw me off.
Will you become the primary?
Yeah, and we would just, and you would become, would you be going?
I'm also in a position that I can do, get back to National League now, too.
So, she can be the alternate.
If you're planning on attending, you certainly can be.
Yeah.
He's talking, he's looking at me. When he looks at me, he's talking to me.
No, no, I'm agreeing with him for you.
Whatever. I'm okay with that.
Well, it doesn't pay to put you on there if you're not going to go, but if you're going to go, then it should be.
No, no, I'll defer to.
Okay, so, that'd be Comerchero and Edwards.
I'm not.
Okay.
Did you move on to something else?
What's that?
Did you move on to the next item?
I'm on the next item. The Pachanga Tribal Liaison, that has been Roberts with me as the alternate, with Nigar, rather, as the alternate. I have to tell you guys, I really would like to be on this one myself. But if there's objection, I'll listen.
No.
You know, I'm interested in doing it myself because of the new project and the federal sequel guidelines. I have an interest in it. How bad do you want it?
I want it because I think I can be effective because of my relationships with those guys. It's not so much that I want it, it's because I think I can do a good job, so. Take that for what it's worth, you know, that's honest.
You know what? How about it? How about it?
Want to be the alternate?
Yeah, yeah.
So, who's on that one?
Thank you. So, that would be Comerchero and Nigar.
Nigar.
Okay.
Okay, Rancho California Water District Liaison.
I think that ought to stay the same.
With Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
I gladly give that one up. Matt, I think that's a good spot.
Yeah.
Water?
Okay, I could do water.
So.
Yes, that one has a little all over it.
It sure does. I see how that works.
I think once in five years, we've had a meeting, you know.
Oh, I could fit that in my schedule.
But we could take the initiative, too, and do something else. Riverside County Child Safety Commission and School District Liaison has been Mrs. Edwards. Continue.
Sure.
Okay. And Temecula Sister City Liaison has been Roberts. Anybody want that role?
Do we keep Mr. Roberts in that?
I'll, I'll take that if nobody else is willing to step up.
Mr. Washington in that role. Okay, Block Four, appoint members of the City Council to serve on each of the following representative assignments to external organizations, and these may include a stipend. Let me say, before we begin, we're going to be talking about five different agencies here. RCA, Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency Board, Riverside County Transportation Commission, Riverside Transit Agency Representative, and WRCOG. I've been the RTA representative from this council since 2000. That's a long time. I've had the privilege of serving twice as chairman of the board. I think it's time somebody else did that, so. So, I would be happy to, to give that one up. And in the context of, of the five of them, and there are five of us here, and I don't know what everybody wants to do, but I think we should just have an open discussion on all five of these and divvy them up.
Well, I've been RTA alternate all these years, and I'm just, I have just left a job where I have run the second-largest transportation agency in the county, and I am going to be resigning from RCHCA, so I would like to, I would like to take RTA.
This, this may work out well because.
Why are you resigning from RCHCA?
Because I don't, if I want to take RTA, I've already, I've already got RCA, and I don't, I don't want to be on three of these.
So, this, this might work out well because I, I believe Councilmember Ron has an RCA, an RCHCA desire.
Yes.
I have an RCTC desire, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Washington has done a yeoman's job representing us at WRCOG. I, I wouldn't recommend a change there unless you wanted a change.
Can I ask real quick on the RCA and RCHCA? I mean, those are obviously two really close, and I think traditionally has been the same role, but I'm not sure the same person should be in both.
Yeah, actually, they aren't. Our, you know, RCA is still very much involved in maintaining and purchasing for, for the MSHCP. RCHCA now is involved strictly in, in the maintenance phase for the SKR, so they're really quite different. And the only place that they have merged their activities is that RCHCA maintains some habitat for the burrowing owl on behalf of RCA. So, that's the only place that they have really joined forces. And I do agree that they should be partnering more, and eventually, I think they will completely.
So, I recall seeing a letter that RCHCA wanted to have you assigned as the chair for the executive committee. Was that?
I didn't take the chair for next year.
Okay.
I mean, I think they wanted me on executive committee, but not chair. I chaired not, not too long ago.
Okay.
Unless, unless there's some fundamental reason why somebody shouldn't hold both those seats, they really do deal with a lot of the same issues that overlap.
No, they really don't.
Really?
I mean, they have, it's totally different, totally different agencies.
Who's running the RCHCA now?
Do you mean the?
What agency's ta, I mean, who's, who's?
The former planning director.
Oh, Carolyn Simpson?
Carolyn, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then Charlie Landry's doing the RCA.
Charlie's RCA, yeah. And never the twain shall meet.
What's your preference, Councilmember Ron?
Well, he wants to do both, so we should just say yes.
Well, no, I'm, because I'm not going to give up RCA because I'm, I'm on the executive committee, and it's, I mean, I've worked my way all the way up to executive committee, and we have certain goals that we're really working on.
Work your way up to everybody's on the executive committee, aren't they?
No, there's only four of us.
Oh, you guys have a different.
RTA's the same one.
Oh, we call that the admin committee at WRCOG. Executive Committee is everybody.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, no, it's, usually, I haven't been on RCA, but I, I know it's the same as RTA. The chairman of the board, they have two committees, the chairman of those committees, and the first vice chair represents the executive committee in a meeting closed session prior to the board meeting.
Right.
Chuck, I assume you want to keep up.
That only leaves you with RCHCA.
That's fine. You know, I mean, as long as we have a, I think, a representative on each one of these, I think we're doing good.
Yeah, and, you know, I think as, we've never really discussed it before because it hasn't come up, but when we've got someone who's been on one of these agencies for a while and has moved into a leadership role, and ultimately will likely ascend to chairman or president or whatever the role is, I think it is important that we support that person to continue, at least until they get through those chairs.
Sure.
So, so I would recommend we keep Mary Ann as RCA, Matt takes RCHCA, and then Mary Ann has requested RTA. Anybody else?
I would, I'll flip you for, for RTA.
And the only reason is because I've worked so closely with them because, again, I have run the second-largest transportation agency in the county for the last five, going on the last five years. So, it's not like I'm going in green.
But since, since these are the, I guess, the sort of representative assignments for external, there's five of them, I'd like to see that, you know, if there's a desire for each member to have a position in one of these.
Are you taking?
I have no problem passing.
Okay.
I've been doing them for so long, I'm ready.
Okay.
So, for me, RTAs are, I mean, that's just, that's a no-brainer.
The reason I'm asking for RTAs, I think there's a, there's a connection between WRCOG's infrastructure and transportation role and some funding that comes from Tump program that goes to the RTA.
There's, there's some, you know, 5% of Tump goes to, to public transit. There's also a connection between RTA and RCTC because of RCTC overall controls the budget of RTA. So, there, there's a lot of overlap there, so.
But I, you know, I, I again would argue that RTA impacts all of our cities in so many ways, and I'm dealing with homeless issues and transportation and all of those things, too. So, I'm usually the one that backs down and says, you know, okay, you take it, but.
Okay, you can have it, Mary Ann.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mary Ann's on RTA. You want to be the alternate, Chuck, or?
Nope.
Okay, Matt, you want to be the alternate?
Or?
RTA?
Sure. I'd rather be the alternate for RCA.
You can do both.
Oh, yeah? All right, just don't miss any meetings, then.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so this is what we've got so far. We've got Mary Ann retaining RCA with Matt as the alternate. We've got RCHCA, Matt. Do we have an alternate? Mary Ann, you want to be the alternate? Does anybody else want to be the alternate?
Uh, sure.
Okay, Mary Ann. And, and RTA, we've got Mary Ann with Matt as the alternate. So, that leaves us with RCTC and RCAG. Chuck, do you want to keep what you got and have Chuck take the, uh, Mike take the other, or you want to talk about it?
I'm good with RCTC, and you're, you're ensconced in RCAG.
Yeah, we need alternates for both.
So, let's exchange alternates. I'll be alternate to COG, and you be alternate to RCTC.
Okay, so, Randy, you got that? Okay, good. Good work, guys. Okay, Block Number Five is appoint members of the City Council to serve on the following ad hoc subcommittees. The Altera Project has been Mr. Nigar and I. I'd like to continue. Do you?
You know, we, we're really far down the line. We've made a lot of good progress, and we've laid the groundwork for negotiations. Let's keep it that way.
Okay, anybody have any objection?
No.
Okay.
There's some, well, I.
Can, can I ask real quick on the Altera? Because I know one of the big issues that's coming up is the linkage movement, wildlife thing. And given my background in that, I know I've got a lot of interest in sort of having those discussions with those folks because I'm not sure they're heading down the right, I should say, the external agencies aren't necessarily heading down the right path. And I'm not sure how significant a hurdle that is to that project, but there's some.
It is a hurdle at this point. Mr. City Attorney, as long as we don't ever violate the Brown Act and, and meet with three of us, is there any restriction on having a Subcommittee of Mr. Nigar and I and then bringing in Mr. Ron on an ad hoc basis if needed that doesn't meet with when we meet?
Yeah, no, you will not be able to do that.
Okay.
Because you'd end up having three members of the council meeting outside of a notice meeting for that ad hoc Subcommittee.
Okay, so, but if we had an issue specifically that pertained to RCA, and we felt it advantageous to include Mr. Ron, we could agendaize it for an open meeting?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, because I don't want to necessarily upset the negotiation of the process, but I think I've got a, hopefully, a different perspective that can really help facilitate that issue.
So, point of order. So, Peter, I am going to be touring the property with one of the principals on Thursday because I've not seen that property, so that's okay.
That's okay because you're acting in your individual capacity as a council member.
Correct.
But you could not talk to Mr. Ron and, and Mr. Comerchero and Mr. Nigar about what you saw and what, what, what the progress was.
But I could talk to one other, neither, I could talk to one other coun, neither of these guys.
I would not recommend that you talk to any member of that ad hoc Subcommittee because.
But I could talk to Matt.
No. Well, no, because he may, he may, I, I won't talk to any of them. You can talk to Mr. Washington.
Chuck and Chuck. I'll give you his phone number.
But who's on the Subcommittee? The Subcommittee is Mike and Jeff. So, why couldn't I talk to Matt?
Because he's, he's going to be brought in if there's an issue that he's familiar with, and then it's going to be, become a, a standing committee because it'll be noticed at that time.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, it'll be noticed as a meeting of the City Council.
Okay.
Because you'll have three City Council members there.
Well, I'm not talking to any of you people.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the feeling is neutral.
Okay, thanks.
The next item, the Annexation Open Space Ad hoc Subcommittee is recommended for deletion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so that is deleted?
You know, let's, before we delete that, the function of that was what to, to prevent another quarry from locating. Was that, was that the idea? Why did we form that?
I think this Subcommittee was used when we had quite a bit of open space diff and we were acquiring pieces of land and escarpment, and it was kind of working its way through that Subcommittee as an end to close session.
Because it's carrying the name open space, and there are some things that, as we get down into the, the rest of this, that, that may have a connotation or a linkage to the open space aspect of it. When we start getting into some of the trails things and.
You're talking about Altera?
Uh, no, there's some other trails things that we're working on, you know, that, that involve.
All under another committee.
Mike, we have a Trails, Trails Ad hoc.
We have a Trails Committee.
Trails Ad hoc, which, which is now getting into, well, Mr. Washington and I are working on Winerys to Ways Trail, okay, which is pretty awesome, and it.
Yeah, it's great.
And it involves open space, so do we roll it over? Do we just assume it does what it does?
If it involves open space in the context of trails, then certainly it should be appropriate for the trails, and just be nice to eliminate one if there's no reason for it to be. You don't, you don't want two committees working on the same issue.
No, no, I know that. Then maybe that's a poor example. I just hate to foreclose on anybody looking at acquiring open space. I don't know, that's always kind of a.
But we can do that.
Okay, I, I, I guess.
Why not just roll the two together?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, acquiring open space is something I think we need to current, always continue to do at every opportunity to look for it, do it, find it.
You could always bring that forward through that Subcommittee.
Well, that's fine. If, if we're having the discussion and that's the council's general consensus, that's fine.
Well, I mean, let's back up a minute. If you think there's something that you foresee you or anybody working on as it pertains to open space throughout the next year, doesn't hurt us to leave it open. I mean, I know that we, we're trying to pare them down where we can because it gets unwieldy, but.
Well, could we leave it open for a year?
I'm sorry, from a staff perspective, if there's nothing to meet on and are any issues, doesn't really hurt to keep it open.
Well, okay, I mean.
Point of order here.
Well, I just, you know, there's potential for purchases and arrangements with Gavlin Mountain, which has come up in the past, you know. So, there's some emerging things, I think, this year that are slightly separate from the Trails Committee, but related to all of that property and adjacent property that was annexed during the whole quarry issue. And so, maybe just for the next 12 months, let's keep that one open. And I'd be very interested in serving on that one just because I think there's some emerging opportunities that could be tied in to a number of different projects that are going on.
I have an idea, if, if, if perhaps, let me work on that with Councilmember Ron, and the, and the reason why is, um, and we can talk about some of the things we talked about, can't we? What, that we, you know, the kind of ideas we floated together that come under that category.
Um, I'm, I'm.
Talking in code.
I'm not quite sure what ideas you're talking about.
Peter, you got that look on your face.
We don't need to go there, Mary Ann's willing to give it up, I'm willing to give it up, if you'd like to do it with Matt, let's just do it.
Mr. Mayor, the only caution I would, would make to you is you can't have one subcommittee of councilmembers A and B and another subcommittee of councilmembers C and D, and then have them talk about the same issues.
Right.
Because then you're really having four talk together.
And, and that's kind of where we're headed, because guaranteed, the subcommittee, the Trails Subcommittee of Niggar and Washington, and then a Subcommittee of Open Space of Niggar and Ron, there's going to be overlap.
Right.
And now you've got three councilmembers talking about it, potentially issues that. Yeah, I can't disagree with you, it's. And so either, well, I mean, I know Matt wants to serve on that, and I'm all for that, but it would seem to be more pragmatic to just maybe delete that one committee and roll open space into the Trails Committee. We call it Trails slash Open Space Committee. I, I, I'm okay with that, but a practical question, because I know some of the things that Matt has shared that he wants to work on in that regard, how does he function? Uh, it's, it's a, it's a practical question, not a trick question, it's real, how, how, how do we direct him to? I'm not hung up on, on serving on a given committee, if, if there's more value in having Matt serve than you and Matt can serve as the Trails slash Open Space Committee. I'm not, I'm not going to stand in the way of us doing the best work we can.
This is fun.
Uh, I'm, uh, I'm totally open to that, I'm, I'm, and I appreciate your, your willingness to work on that. Check my ego at the door.
There you go, thank you, Mr. Washington, seriously. Matt, what, where your interest lies, uh, would that, I assume the answer's yes, but would it include trails?
Yes, sure, I mean, you know, they're, they're, they're hard to disassociate from one another.
Yeah, so I was going to suggest that we have just an ad hoc committee for that one issue, but if it's also going to, uh. Going to handle trails, then.
Right.
Okay, so, um, thanks to Mr. Washington's good graces, um, looks like we have Niggar and Ron as a combined open space trails committee, and the open space committee as listed here will be deleted.
Right.
Okay? All right, 2015 Civic Center Concert Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that's Washington and I for now.
Keep it.
Okay. Commission Review Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Delete it.
Yeah, I agree, I think that work's been accomplished, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, we're deleting the Commission Review Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Yep.
Okay, good. Deletion is good. 2015 Community Services Funding Ad Hoc Subcommittee, and this is when we talked about putting on a rotating base.
Now, what, if somebody wants to do it, I'm more than willing to give it up.
You, you know, I, I would recommend on this one, uh, that we do rotate it, and again, based on the, uh, Mr. Washington's suggestion of a, a minute ago, to have a one year and a two year, uh, I think it's really easy to start being the mayor and mayor pro tem.
Shouldn't that be the, isn't that the same as the finance, though?
No.
No?
No, this is just, uh, community service funding, nothing, nothing else.
Yeah.
So that would put Mr. Washington and I on this year, Mr. Washington would continue next year with somebody else other than me.
I, I would just hesitate to, to say it's always going to be the mayor and mayor pro tem.
And I, I understand that, but it's a good way to get started.
Sure.
I mean, because that automatically rotates and so.
It's a good way, yeah, it's a good way to rotate.
Way to balance it.
So then, starting whoever's mayor pro tem would be two years.
Right.
And then from there on out, it would be, everybody would get two years on it.
So you're going to be on it two more years.
Right.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay. Diaz Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee, I guess until we see a water park built, we're going to keep that one alive.
Yeah, since the deal's ongoing, then we'll see.
Yeah, very good with that.
Mm-hmm.
French Valley Parkway Interchange Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that's been Mr. Roberts and I.
Let me, um, talk a little bit about that one, there's a great deal of overlap with that one and the Winchester Hills Subcommittee, um, the Bieri property, uh, they really go hand in hand, uh, he, he needs French Valley Parkway to move forward, uh, and, um, they're almost in. And I would recommend that the same two people be on those committees.
Uh, we, we can certainly talk about that, I'm not sure I agree with you, though, that, uh, that those two go that hand in hand, I, I think certainly there's an effect on the Bieri property by what happens with French Valley Interchange, but that is such a large component of our city's overall infrastructure plan that it really stands alone, um.
And, and, uh, well, I couldn't argue with that, um, it plays such a big part in relation to what happens at that property, um, that the, uh, the need to move it forward and really, really work the French Valley Parkway project, um, to make the Winchester Hills property viable is, is critical.
Well, let, let me propose this, again, I, I.
I'd be willing.
I don't disagree with you on that, but that doesn't mean we can't do what you're suggesting, uh, and so you were serving on the Winchester Hills Committee with Mr. Roberts, I was serving on French Valley with Mr. Roberts, does anybody have any objection? If we keep those two committees in place, and Mr. Niggar and I do both of them.
No, I don't care.
You still have, you don't have a technical conflict, but you had verbalized, um, a lack of desire to serve on the Winchester Hills, um, you and I both kind of.
I sold, I sold my house there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh.
So I, I no longer have.
That's fine by me.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's do that, Randy, that's one of the, the second from the last, I know you're way ahead of me.
Comacero and Niggar on both.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so where are we, French Valley, Higher Education Ad Hoc Subcommittee, I think you guys are doing a great job.
You know, uh, this is one of those where, uh, I think it's something where we pulled it up from our bootstraps and, and, and made it happen and then got council support, what do we do with that now?
Well, I think that's for you guys to determine as a subcommittee going forward, but I, I think this is certainly one of those committees that requires continuity, you know, because so much rolls over from one year to the next.
We, we had a big tool in our tool belt in the past called RDA, um, we don't have that any longer, um, but as of a little over a week ago, um, the governor commented about, um, his budget proposal, of which, um, education is a big component, um, and now that we have a state senator, uh, from this region, perhaps there's a way for us to land some new kinds of money that can help us continue the progress that we've made in promoting higher education.
Yeah.
Which certainly should be a priority, and so I'm willing to continue serving on that subcommittee, hopefully we can. Mr. Ron. Get some more things done. Let me ask you, Mr. Ron, uh, how bad do you want on this? I know you expressed to me that, that's something you wanted to do, um.
Yeah, I, I think just given my background, you know, and.
I forgot.
My, yeah, you know, and my relationship with higher ed, it, uh, seems to be a natural fit, uh, and I'm familiar with a lot of the granting and funding programs and a lot of the legislation that's been done in the state, uh, related to higher ed.
Is any conflict?
Well, and, and, Peter, we, we had talked about potential conflicts, but as long as I'm not negotiating on behalf of a university that I'm working for or have any financial interests in those dealings, then.
As long as you're not the president of Cal State Temecula.
That's, they haven't offered me the.
Could happen, you know.
Job, well, they haven't offered me the job yet, but, um, but I, I don't see any potential, and you had mentioned some exemptions related to state level income and so forth.
Yeah, um, I, uh, as, as long as you're not the person who's designated by Cal State San Marcos or one of the other universities to negotiate a deal with the city, there, there should not be a problem.
Okay.
So, Cal State San Marcos is likely to be a beneficiary of, um, expansion efforts that we might put forth, would that create a conflict for you?
I don't, I don't believe it would, because I, I wouldn't be benefiting financially from anything, and I'm not putting myself in a position with that particular university to be on their negotiating team with the city, so as long as I'm not negotiating with myself.
But if they were a source of income to him, does, does that, how's that work?
It, it's a state agency, so the source of income is different, the issue is what agreement does the city enter into with the university, and, and part of that too, we'll not, you're not really going to have a good handle on what the potential conflicts are until the university says, you know, Mr. Ron or Dr. Ron, we'd like you to handle this, this project for the university.
Right, and at that point, I mean, regardless of my role with the subcommittee as council, I couldn't be involved in that whole process anyway, so, um, and I'm not anticipating taking on a role like that with the, the campus anyway, so.
So Peter, by the same token, I'm a trustee for the foundation for that university.
Which is separate from the university.
Yeah, that's separate, because that's a, a, a totally separate entity, and the city would not be entering into an agreement with the foundation, just with the, with the university itself.
Okay, and then the second thing is I'm now the district director for the senator.
Um, i- if your role as working for the senator was to help fund something for a university in Temecula, then you would have a conflict and would not be able to participate in that.
Okay.
Mr. Niggar, not to put words in your mouth, but you seem to be a little conciliatory there.
Well, oh, listen, I'd like to stay on this committee, it's something that, uh, you know, Councilmember Washington and I have, have, I, you know, I, we don't use the word "I" very much on this council, but I'm, something that we pulled up from our bootstraps and really got going. Going on eight years now.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, however, I know that it's important to Councilmember Ron, and in that regard, I'm willing to act, we asked to it, um, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I know you guys will work too, uh, well with it, and I'll move on to other things, I know it's important to you.
That's okay with me, Mary Ann.
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay, done. Okay, uh, Hospital Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that's been, uh.
Do we need that?
Niggar and Mr. Washington, that was me, but, uh.
Oh, that's for the helipad.
I guess I'm on the board of the hospital.
Do it the helipad review or something?
Yeah, and ultimately there'll be another tower, so.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave that.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay, Human Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Niggar and Edwards.
Mm-hmm.
We can leave it, or I'd be glad to, if somebody wants to take my place.
I think you guys are doing an outstanding job.
Why don't we leave it?
That was your thing.
Uh, inclusive play structure, as Mike alluded to, uh, not long ago, we formed that to build a special needs park, and we're going to cut the ribbon pretty soon, so that's exciting.
Well, let's leave that on for, you know, till mid-year and see how it goes.
Oh, you have to finish it.
Yeah, we have to finish it.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Guys got to stay till it's finished.
Uh, Infill Land Use and Project Review Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that's Mr. Niggar and I.
We're way too into it.
Yeah, I, I agree, we've got a lot of.
We'll bring a dynamic.
Studies going on and things we're working on there, so.
Bring a good report to the council.
Okay, anybody doesn't agree, just speak up.
Yeah.
Jefferson Carter Ad Hoc Subcommittee, uh, that's been Mr. Roberts and I, uh, we're at a point now where we're getting ready to bring the ESP forward and it'll all occur this year, but, uh, so I'd like to stay on that.
I'd like to do that one.
I'd like to join.
Everybody wants to do that one, you want to do that one? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Washington?
Yeah.
And I?
That one's going to be fun, really fun.
It may last for 50 years, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Luxury Car Dealership and Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Washington and that was Roberts.
I think you're the only one who drives a luxury automobile, so you should probably be on it.
Uh, I'll take it if nobody wants it, then someone else wants it.
Now, wait a minute, no.
Sure?
I'd love to see a Land Rover dealership.
We get a nice shoe store, I'll be on that one.
Okay, let's start a new, let's have a new subcommittee, shoes.
High-end shoes.
And Mrs. Edwards.
I'm staying on the Nordstrom Subcommittee, okay?
Volunteer there.
Staying on the Nordstrom Subcommittee.
You can tell what a boring discussion it is, you know, a few diehards are staying, thank you, you have to be here.
I want to stick around for that, if.
Which one is this?
Yeah, yeah, there will be more luxury car dealers in town.
Luxury automobile dealers.
Okay, so, uh.
Do we have a second?
I lost my place.
I don't know.
I'll, I'll volunteer for that one.
So, okay, uh, so it would be Washington and Ron, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Uh, Madera Vista Development Ad Hoc Subcommittee, well, yeah, what is that?
That is summer house, and I think that was a requirement to have, uh, periodic meetings with the community's subcommittee as it relates to the summer house.
I think that should be Washington and Ron.
Oh, I know.
That's your initiation?
It's done, right? It's finished.
Let the hazing begin.
There's a requirement to keep it in place.
Yeah, yeah.
You never know what's going to come up.
Okay, done next, um, 2015 Military Ad Hoc Subcommittee is Washington and I, I think is the only two veterans, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Mira de Creek Project Admin Committee, um, well, you can't go back on there yet, can you?
Oh, I got to wait a year, well, Peter, do I have to wait a year?
You're still being.
Well, but it's, but.
From your last income from the Boys and Girls Hall.
But it's discretionary, isn't it, because of the, they changed the 500-foot rule?
Well, if the, by changing the 500-foot rule, all it means is that if you're within 500 feet, you have to go to the FPPC for an opinion.
Oh, okay, you can keep it.
Okay, so maybe next time.
Yeah.
Okay, so Niggar and Washington, uh.
Yeah, I'd, I'd keep it the same.
Okay, Old Town Civic Center Ad Hoc Subcommittee was Roberts and I, uh, I'd certainly like to keep that, anybody want to join me?
Since you're working on Jefferson with Mr. Washington here, why don't you guys just continue?
Works for me. Old Town Gym Ad Hoc Subcommittee, is there ever going to be an Old Town Gym?
We sure need one.
And we need one, but is there ever going to be one?
I don't know where we come up with, what was it, $4 million?
Yeah.
At last.
You know, I'd recommend, we do need one, I mean, there's no doubt, but I'd recommend we delete that and reconstitute it at such time as we find it's feasible.
I'm actually recommending to a group that they do it, go after, go out a different way, try to do it, but do it a different way.
Okay, we, we can always resurrect the committee if we need to.
Private sector donations and things.
Well, that would be best of all.
Yep.
Quality of Life Master Plan Ad Hoc Subcommittee was Roberts and Washington.
Do we still need that?
Yeah, I don't think, do we? Is, is it an implementation thing at this point, because obviously the plan is done?
You're just going to review.
We have a youth master plan that, uh, Mr. Niggar and I serve on, um, and, and to a certain degree, at least the youth master plan, um, you know, kind of represents a, a component of the Quality of Life Master Plan.
Sure.
Big one.
Perhaps we keep it and we don't run into any, uh, Brown Act issues if it's still the same, if it's the same two people.
Well, why don't we just roll the two committees together?
Um, we could, all right, that's fine.
Peter, is there any issue with that?
No, you can do that. No.
Just it's a master plan committee. Quality of Life and Youth Master Plan Subcommittee with Nigara and Washington.
If they're reviewing the Quality of Life master plan and the youth master plan is part of that component, then...
I mean, they're separate master plans, but what we have dealt with, with the youth master plan is kind of encompassed in the Quality of Life master plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a natural to join them together.
Okay.
Why don't we just, to make it kind of official, let's delete both of them and create a new one with a name that's reflective of that.
Okay.
Peter, you're looking at me like you don't like that idea.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, okay. So whatever, Aaron, whatever name you come up with, obviously should have a little of both there in the title. Ronald Reagan Sports Park Ad Hoc Subcommittee is marked for deletion.
There'll be, there's a bike group proposing trails in that area, as long as you don't mind the trails committee handling that one.
No, I think that's fine.
I think if we're going to have a trails committee, we have to handle all trails, I think.
So, back to the Parks and Rec Committee, because this Ronald Reagan Sports Park Committee, was that established for the can-do?
Yeah, it really was.
So, this committee really isn't, well, not strictly, it's not needed anymore, although I just got an email today that Perry's got something coming up.
And I know he's talked about fundraising and subsequent phases of that, so...
Well, but I...
We can leave it open, or we can roll it into the Parks and Rec?
I mean, you know, he'll always be around.
Well, I don't know, I kind of feel like either we roll it into Parks and Rec, well, I don't know.
It was really to get the can-do off the ground and the initial donations for the initial statue, I think, and raise awareness and...
I'm good either way.
I'm fine.
Well, so you want to leave it open? Or roll it into Parks and Rec, one or the other?
I said we do it.
I'd recommend we roll it into Park and Rec.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to delete that, and anything that comes up in that regard will assign to Parks and Rec. Raw Par Ranch Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I'd say that's stage...
That was Roberts and I.
Councilmember Edwards.
Edwards.
Instead of...
Roberts comes off, okay. Strategic Physical Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Leave as-is?
Yeah, that's good.
What do they do again?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to really, what makes this different from the finance committee?
Right.
Well, I always thought the finance committee was the committee that was looking at...
This was more, this was a new subcommittee we introduced last year where we wanted to utilize two councilmembers to talk big picture, vision, strategies involving the five-year planning document, different disciplines that we see hitting our general fund.
We were looking at revenue generation and expenditures.
And we were also going to do an evaluation of TCSD, which we're in the middle of doing that right now with facilities and stuff, so that's how we envision using this particular subcommittee.
Leave it alone?
Yep.
Supportive Housing Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Washington and Nigara.
Was that with Mission of Hope?
That's part of it. I think we still actually have some affordable housing money, and if we close a deal on the Diaz property, that is affordable housing funds as well.
Oh, that's right.
Leave it as-is.
Okay, let's leave it.
Yeah.
Teen Village Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Chuck, you and I both would love to see that someday.
Yeah.
We haven't had the opportunity funding-wise to do it, but let's leave it open and continue to look.
A recession was a blow to the gut.
If that water park goes in, we'll get there.
And there are some synergies there, as we talked about before. TVE Two, the incubator, has been Washington and I.
Keep it.
Don't we keep it?
Yeah, yeah.
Trails, we've already talked about.
Wait a minute, did you, oh, never mind, the health care is out.
Trails Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we got, Wall of Honor Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
That's just to select people, that's ongoing, just for when we want people on the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Winchester Hills, we've already done, and Youth Master Plan, we've already done.
Yeah.
Moving on to Item Six, Promenade, that's one that I proudly served with Mr. Roberts on the last expansion, I'd love to do it again.
I'd like to do that one.
I'd like to do that one.
I'm sorry, you're right. Chuck and I served on that one.
Yeah, see, that's where the Nordstrom comes into play.
Well, everybody wants it.
Yeah, that's where Nordstrom's coming into play, right there.
I can't think of anybody better than Mary Ann.
And that one, but...
They're not getting a Nordstrom, and they're not getting a whole spaghetti.
Well, I haven't asked for much, I want it.
Well...
I don't even have that on my list, where is it?
Item Six.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Oh.
You know, I, you know what, I acquiesced on the Pachanga one. This is, throw me this bone back.
I'm not going to acquiesce on this one. If Mary Ann wants to, I'm fine with that, serving with you, but I think this is, this is my bailiwick, this is where I am.
Well, it's mine, too.
You and I?
Well, you two.
Can you live with that?
Two men on a mall committee, that's just wrong.
Why, did we do a bad job, Chuck and I on the last one?
It's just wrong.
Why?
Because I've wanted...
Tell Kenneth Lee that.
I've wanted this one since 2006.
I'm the guy that goes to Las Vegas to lobby the shopping center guys and try to bring something back.
I'm okay with taking Pachanga back, because I'd like to watch them do their expansion, very interested in the NEPA document, and seeing, and learning, and getting an education there. I mean, I wouldn't mind taking that back, and you go ahead and take the mall with Mary Ann. I mean, you got to give a little bit here, Jan.
No, no, well, hey, I've given on almost everything I've got. But how about this? What if you and I serve as a two-member committee rather than a primary and alternate on Pachanga? Happy to do that.
So, in tandem?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, and then...
Yeah, I always wondered why we didn't have two, I thought at one point, we did have two people on Pachanga, rather than a primary and an alternate.
Okay, that's fair enough, okay. So what do we do about this one?
So, Mary Ann and I on this one, and Randy, just tweak the Pachanga to be just two-member committee, not an alternate or primary.
And I think it's only fair that the two representatives for Pachanga liaison also serve as the Temecula Creek Inn Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Ooh, snap, ooh, you are...
I'm just saying.
You are a troublemaker.
You want Pachanga?
You know, there may, there may be, that, there may be a little, there could be a conflict in that regard, because it's going, it would be, it's certainly not a legal one.
Yeah.
There's a practical one, but let me, if I may inquire, Mr. Mayor, what's the status of that project? I mean, where are they at? Have they, have they filed their NOP? Have they finished their EIR? Has it gone to circulation? Where's that at? This thing's been in the hopper for five years now.
The NOP, to my knowledge, has not been filed yet. They've been working out some details between the tribe as well as with the traffic studies and the traffic. To my knowledge, though, they've worked out just about all of their differences with the staff, and they're ready to push forward to the next level.
I have a suspicion, Mr. Mayor, I have a suspicion that we probably should do it, and the reason being is there's an eastern bypass that needs to be worked out, it's not going to go through the reservation, it can't make it through those hills, and it's probably going to end up being Rainbow Valley Road, and if it's Rainbow Valley Road, it's a Temecula Creek Inn thing, and there's going to be a synergy between the two.
There will be...
It's not an eastern bypass.
Well, I know, I know.
You know, there's something inside me that says for both of those projects, they would be better served by two committees, and I don't know why, just something in my gut, but as a practical matter, it does seem to make sense for that to be the same.
Well, okay, let's look at it in a practical sense. We're serving on a, on an issue with the tribe, let's say the tribe doesn't want certain area disturbed, okay? So we have to go back to Temecula Creek Inn and say, hey, where do you want, where you want to build houses, and where you're proposing to build houses, the tribe would rather you not disturb it.
It has to be the same.
Okay, and so now, here we are, you know, that, there's, there's our, not a legal conflict, but there's our working conflict right there.
Peter, do you see any issue with, as issues come up, if we're the same subcommittee, and we're working with Pachanga, and they want to do X, and that's going to impact Temecula Creek Inn, more likely the other way around, do you see it as combining that almost into one issue, and almost mediating between the two projects, and sitting down together with the tribe and with TCI, and saying, okay, guys, let's work this all out?
Yes, actually, I do.